...that surrounds us and brings visitors from far away to this area. And we thank you for our loved ones and for all those who will choose to visit us this season. Help us to always be grateful for our community and the beauty that surrounds us. Grant us your grace, Lord God, as this council makes decisions that affect those who live, work, and visit in this town. And we ask all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And I ask everybody to turn their cell phones off if they could. And also, anybody up here, you can always drag these things a little closer if somebody can't hear, okay? We'll see if we can get through this fairly soon. We've made a lot of changes in the last half an hour, so we'll see if we can do this. Item number two is the agenda adoption. And Stephen, you had some...
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of changes. First of all, item 9G, which are the resolutions for Sheila Spicer and Tony Hennessy, I want to move those up under the mayor's communications along with the other two resolutions and make adoption of those four resolutions as one motion, as the first item under your communications. And then the second item under your communications are the two certificates of appreciation to the attorneys.
Okay.
And then, this contract that we have in front of us, the Collette contract for the, which is the retail strip mall building, add that as the new 9G.
Okay. Alrighty. Consider that done. Anybody else have any other thoughts, suggestions? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as modified?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Bob. Do we hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Stephen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay. Mayor's communications. I'm gonna do a little reading. We have four resolutions. We had two, and we're gonna add a couple, so...
Are you gonna read the resolutions right now, or we're gonna adopt them first and then read them?
Well, I was gonna read them and then adopt them.
Okay.
Okay, well, yeah, let me go through and read them and then we'll adopt them. Okay, take a motion. Okay, the first one is a resolution number 161011C. This is a resolution of the Town of Lake Lure, North Carolina, thanking Mike Egan for his service to the Town of Lake Lure, whereas Mike Egan was appointed to serve as Community Development Attorney for the Town of Lake Lure in 2006 and serve the town in a dedicated and conscientious manner over the next 10 years. Whereas, through his work, Mike Egan has provided excellent counsel to the town and the Community Development Department and displayed the highest degree of professionalism and integrity. And whereas, Mike Egan has served the Town of Lake Lure community faithfully. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the council and the citizens of the Town of Lake Lure, that the Lake Lure Town Council thanks Mike Egan for his service to the town and wishes him well in the future. Read, approved, and adopted in a minute. This 11th day of October 2016. You're gonna hear a lot of the same words. Okay, resolution 161011B. A resolution of the Town of Lake Lure, North Carolina, thanking Chris Callahan for his service to the Town of Lake Lure, whereas Chris Callahan was appointed to serve as Town Attorney for the Town of Lake Lure in 1985 and served the town in a dedicated and conscious manner, conscious manner, over the next 31 years. And whereas, through his work, Chris Callahan has provided excellence counsel to the town and displayed the highest degree of professionalism and integrity. Whereas, Chris Callahan has served the town community faithfully. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the council and the citizens of the Town of Lake Lure, that the Lake Lure Town Council thanks Chris Callahan for his service and wishes him well in the future endeavors. Read, approved, and adopted this 11th day of October 2016. I'm gonna read two more that were at the end of the agenda, and I don't believe either person is here, so... Resolution number 1610-11, thanking Tony Hennessy for his service to the Town of Lake Lure and honoring him in his retirement, whereas Tony Hennessy began working for the Town of Lake Lure September 30, 1988, and became Public Works Director in May of 1991. And whereas, Tony Hennessy has served the town in a dedicated and conscientious manner over the next, the past 28 years and retired from his position as Public Works Director on September 30, 2016. And whereas, through his work, Tony Hennessy has advanced the Public Works Department and displayed the highest degree of professionalism and integrity. And whereas, Tony Hennessy has served the Lake Lure community faithfully. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the council and the citizens of the Town of Lake Lure and the Lake Lure Town Council thanks Tony for his service to the Town of Lake Lure and wishes him well in the future endeavors. Read, approved, and adopted this 11th day of October 2016. Again, a lot of the same words. Resolution number 16-10-11A, thanking Sheila Spicer for her service to the Town of Lake Lure and honoring her in her retirement, whereas Sheila Spicer began working for the Town of Lake Lure August 25, 1999, and became zoning administrator in January of 2009. And whereas, Sheila has served the town in a dedicated and conscientious manner over the past 17 years and retired from her position as zoning administrator on September 30, 2016. And whereas, through her work, Sheila Spicer has advanced the Community Development Department and displayed the highest degree of professionalism and integrity. And whereas, Sheila Spicer has served the Lake Lure community faithfully. Now therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the council and the citizens of the Town of Lake Lure, that Lake Lure Town Council thanks Sheila for her service to the Town of Lake Lure and wishes her well in her future endeavors. Read, approved, and adopted this 11th day of October 2016. And these have all been notarized and so forth.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to proudly make the motion that we adopt all four of those well-deserved resolutions.
Motion made by Steve. Do we hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. And they really are. These folks have done so much for all of us. Two of them are not here, but we do have a couple of plaques for our two attorneys. And we'd like to have Shannon come forward and Ron Nally, our new town manager, to recognize Mike Egan for his 10 years of service for us.
Thank you.
This is where you take the picture. Wait, get in the picture. Come on, get in the picture.
Can't yell at me like you do.
Okay.
And this is presented to Mike Egan in appreciation of 10 years of dedicated public service and strong commitment to Town of Lake Lure and served as Community Development Attorney October 11, 2016. Best wishes on your retirement. Mike, it's been a great 10 years, and we really have appreciated your work.
Thanks, Shannon. I wanna say, this is a kindness. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it's been a privilege. I love this town and the people in it, so keep on pushing forward, folks.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate it. Thanks, Mike. Okay, although I'm gonna present this, we're going to actually have at the end of the meeting, a presentation by all the council members to honor reigning attorney. Chris, come on up here.
Should've worn socks.
Okay, okay. Again, this is presented to Chris Callahan. Appreciation for 31 years of dedicated public service and strong commitment to the Town of Lake Lure and served as Town Attorney on October 11, 2016. Best wishes on your retirement. Really, thank you so much. And, here, why don't you take a moment? Now, we have an unusual, although we're not gonna vote...
Move, move.
I am trying to step down to mayor protest. Anyway, we do have the distinct pleasure of having, we went into closed session last month and selected a new attorney for Town Attorney who will start with us in January. But he's fortunate enough to join us tonight, and so we'd like to have him stand to be recognized, William Morgan. And I ask, while you're standing there, that Chris Callahan will give you a little bit of a buildup, because he knows you from your years going past.
Let me tell you how I know him and why I have highly recommended him as the new Town Attorney for Lake Lure. I began meeting William, first of all, the first time I met William, you gotta understand, he's local. He grew up in Green Hill. His mother lives in Green Hill. He went to RS Central High School, graduated, what, '80, '82? '82. And then his first job as a lawyer was in Rutherfordton as the clerk for federal Judge Woodrow Jones, who lived in Rutherfordton. And he went on from there into private practice in Chapel Hill and other places. He became the Town Attorney for Siler City years ago. How many years you been attorney for Siler City?
Forty years.
Forty years, yeah. Twenty years, okay, twenty years. I was gonna say, you've got four years than I do. It just feels like forty. And then a couple other towns. Most recently, Kandler?
Canton.
Ken, yeah, Canton. Okay, Canton, in Buckham County. And so, I began also getting reacquainted with him at municipal attorney conferences. You know, when you go down to Wilmington and they take all the attorneys out on the ferry boat, go up and down the Cape Fear River on an evening cruise, you can have some fun talking. I learned about his thinking about municipal government and his experience in that. We became friends through that. Turns out, my wife, Elsie, knows his wife really well, because they're both from Black Mountain. And so, when it came time that I needed to step down and move into another level of retirement, I saw, one, he's local to this area, he's had vast experience, currently representing three other towns, this will be his fourth, had many appeals and appellate cases that he has included in his resume to the North Carolina Court of Appeals and maybe a few even to the North Carolina Supreme Court. And I just think the, he would bring the best legal advice in this area at an affordable price for y'all, and I want the best for Lake Lure. I can tell you that. I think y'all know that after 30-plus years, I want the best for this town, and I think he'll do you a good job.
Very good, Chris. Thank you very much. Welcome aboard. And I had to tell you one of those things where you tell a sort of a story on yourself. Yesterday, Ron came to me and he said, "Has anybody called William and told him yet that we hired him as our attorney?" And I said, "I hadn't called him." So I called him up with a really embarrassed face and said, "You know, we had hired you, we want you to come on." And, well, he knew more about his job than I did. Chris had spoken to him, and then yesterday he got a call from the courier that his, it was being in the courier, messaging the courier, and we hadn't even talked to him yet.
That's where my mother calls, she read it.
So shame, shame on us. We won't let that happen too often. So thank you. Welcome aboard, really.
At least he has his own socks.
That's good. Okay, item number four, Town Manager Communication.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The, in your agenda packet, the reports from our department heads are included. If you have any questions about those, some of those are with us, so I'll try my best to get the answers for you. I only have actually one communication tonight, and that is to say that we have set the fall planning session for December 1st at the Tryon Equestrian Center. So we're looking forward to having y'all out there and having a good day of planning. So look forward to that, and I will be sending out an agenda for you to review probably within the next week.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to number five, Council Liaison Reports and Comments. Steve, why don't you add, please?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, on the Parks and Recreation Board, Vic Knight, who has been with the board for some time and has done a lot of great service for the town, had to resign. So we are seeking applicants for the Parks and Recreation Board. We would like for you to get those applications submitted to Andy by October 31, so she has time to put them in next month's packet, and then we'll make an appointment. The golf course this year, basic summary of the report is they're ahead of last year. The foot golf has really taken off and becoming a sport that many, many people are participating in. We have three great things to report regarding parks. First of all, the Buffalo Creek Park, 4.3 miles of those trails have been completed. That's a seven-mile course that is to be done by December 31, based on the grant we received for that. And 4.3 miles have been complete, so we're on track. There was a rough start on that, but that was all the rough terrain, too. But once they got past the first mile or two, it's going pretty quick. Back in April, we authorized the Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy to apply for a grant for, on behalf of the town, for 1,300 acres of land known as Weed Patch. That grant has been approved, and there will be more information to follow on that around January when the grant is actually presented to us. So that'll be coming later on. The final thing on that is we applied for a grant of $48,600 to pave the waterfront walking pass in Morse Park, and that has been approved. So those are three great things that have happened on that front. The Lake Structure Appeals Board did not meet in September. There were no cases. The Board of Adjustment did meet. They had two cases. Both of them were zoning variances, both of which were approved without condition. And the Board of Adjustment, I believe, is doing a great job, and kudos to the direction they're headed under John Kilby's tutelage as the chair. The last thing I need to report is Commissioner Moore is not here tonight. He asked me to report for him on the Asset Management Board, which met, as soon as I pull it up here right quick, on September the 20th. They talked about the West Side Connector, and there was a discussion of that. For those of you who may not know what that is, that's a potential conceptual connector between Boys' Camp Road and Rumbling Bald. And there was some discussion on that. Again, that's long-term vision, long-term planning and discussion. We talked about potential uses for the ABC Store property, that's the current property. Again, these are all potential and conceptual type discussions there. One of the things later on in our agenda is a contract that we'll be going over that deals with the strip mall building that the town purchased. This all ties into that. The Board also discussed a conflict of interest policy, and Mr. Nally provided copies of the City of Hickory Code of Ethics and also the Town of Lake Lure Code of Ethics, and working off of what the North Carolina School of Government has in the way of Code of Ethics to develop that for the Asset Management Board, and based on all the things they do. And then they talked briefly about the asset review of the dam. The minutes are online, they're, or as soon as they're approved, I guess, will be posted online on the website, so they're available for anybody to review. The zoning and planning meeting did not meet. There were no cases. So that's the end of the report.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Mary Ann?
Okay, first of all, the ABC Board met...
Pull that a little closer.
With the Town Manager and Charlie Ellis. And their economic report for the end year is very good, with more funds coming into the town than possibly any previous year. There was quite a bit of discussion about the move that has been proposed to the strip mall. The Board members do not want to move, so there is a consensus among the Board, but they also have a contract where they lease that building with the town's ability to terminate the lease. So we'll be looking at having planners go and look at the site, evaluate whether or not 18-wheelers can bring their merchandise in, how it will be loaded, how they will turn around, and if there's any reason that it is not a suitable site. The ABC Board will then consider if they must move, whether or not to buy the strip mall or lease the strip mall area from the town. And it will be determined whether they will occupy half the building or perhaps more, and that's part of what the planners will be looking at. So we're all waiting to see what the planners recommend, and then we'll look at it again. The other meeting was the Lake Advisory Board, and there was, I'm a little confused, because the notes here say it was September 12, and it would've been an October 3 meeting, but it... They discussed fees for commercial categories, and they reviewed recommendations for proposed revision to lake use regulations concerning permit fees for exempt boats. They did make a recommendation, which will go to the Marine Commission, I presume, when they meet in December, that certain boats, particularly construction and people working and doing work for the town, be exempt. They're looking at increasing commercial fees to help to maintain and pay for dredging. They would like to feel that everyone who earns money commercially from commercial operations on the lake would pay a fair share of their profits to help support the dredging and lake maintenance and lake operations. That's still under discussion. The Lake Lure Tours did a great presentation. They are the only tour boats presently that are under an agreement with the town, where they are paying a portion of their profits to the town. And the Board is looking at how that can be made fairer, where anyone making profits from a commercial operation on the lake would have some agreement. And they also looked at the fees for commercial boats. And all of that's still under study, and they will be meeting and having additional meetings before the Marine Commission meets in December to make some recommendations. So if you have an interest, you might want to attend those meetings and voice your concerns.
Okay, Bob?
All right, we had our monthly meeting of the Utilities Advisory Board on October 4th. Under old business, we've been looking at the CWS rates that were over in Rumbling Bald. There's been a rumor that some customers had thought that the rates had gone up more than what they should have. So we had Board Member Roger Peterson take both the old billing and the new billing, compared the two, and it appears basically it was just when they were reading them with the crossover of the two months that is why some people felt that the billing was out of line, but it turned out that billing appears to be correct. We then looked at their commercial rates over there, had Paul Westbrook go through, and there are some additional questions that he still had and some more information. So hopefully next month they'll update us on the commercial side of it, whether those rates were properly applied and charged for. Also, we got an update. We went to look at the discharge meters for the sewer system, by which we want to confirm that we're charging enough or maybe too much. Turned out those were padlocked, and so we've got to chase them down and see why they padlocked the locations there. But we're updating that, and we're recalibrating the meters once we get access to them, so we'll have accurate discharge rates every month on that. Update on our new business was a green line. The project, the loan's in place as far as the paperwork. Ron got everything needed there, along with Harlot Brown, so that's proceeding well. We're slightly ahead of schedule on the engineering and proposal that'll be going out. Originally, we're gonna bid sometime in early 2018, but if it continues on, we may be able to put those bid packages out by the end of the year, 2017. Future topics are gonna be water rates, water supply strategy, well versus reservoir, utility extensions for water and sewer. We've had rumor that through one of the Board members at Lake Lure Village Resort at one time had wanted to tap into the city water. They were talking to John Chapman, one of our Board members. So we said, "Bring to council and bring to this Board any interest that they might have doing so." We're also gonna look at the underground utilities, what need repairs and what needs to be upgraded, water and sewer ordinances, and then also looking at relocating these power lines around the beach area. We want to do a long-term plan to see if there's some way to get all these power lines underground, and it may even include Chimney Rock. It's been done in the city of Asheville throughout the entire town and back in the 1980s. Waynesville did it also several years ago, so we're going to explore and see if we can get some grant help on that. And here, again, it's long-term planning, but it's a goal we'd like to see someday, is get all that removed and taken out. And the final topic we talked about, we're added to the list, were the streetlights. I don't know if you've noticed, but they've gone to the new LED street lighting under their replacement. Right now, the town has a contract for X number of streetlights throughout the area. These streetlights, some of them are 30 years old, and our contract for the first 10 years has been long done and over with. So we've asked the Board to review and get up with the Utility Commission, Duke Power, let's look at getting these fixtures upgraded. But the new LEDs, for one, need to have reflective shields where the light goes straight down and doesn't contaminate the area. We've got a couple of them right now that the pole leans back, it's like a floodlight instead of a down light. So we're gonna look at that contamination and request that Duke puts shields on all new LED lighting. And one final note is, we're gonna be meeting with AT&amp;T and Pangera. We're working, we just now got the engineer's number for AT&amp;T, which was like finding a needle in a haystack, but we do have a contact person now, and we'll want to bring them before the Utilities Board, ask them what their future intents are for air net, for service, and then have Angera there to see if there's any voids, and bring them out both at the same time. So if you want this as a public meeting, love to have you there, and if you would, just check the website and see when we're gonna have... just check the website and see when we're going to have AT&amp;T there. I know there's some questions through the community about the poor service in the area.
Very good. Thank you. One thing I neglected to say, and this is for you, Steve. Chris, you were saying something about the acquisition of the land under the contract. This is something that, a suggestion from our attorney.
Well, I mean, the first step is obviously to have the contract prepared to buy at that price, and then of course, after the contract's signed and everybody's agreed to it, then we move on to all the closing, where they sign the deed over to the town. But I highly recommend you get a title search and title insurance before you do it at closing. I mean, the cost of doing a title search on property of $25,000, $5,000 value would be very minimum, and title insurance would be very minimum, probably total would be less than $400. And it's a one-time expense, but then you have insurance on your purchase. Sure does make it easier to turn around and sell it when you just show the buyer or the realtor selling it for you, your title policy. It solves any issue of back title problems. This thing's been held, just from what little we know, by the American Legion in a couple of different formats over the last 40 years, and I don't know to what extent they've kept up with all their filings with the Secretary of State and stuff. So for that kind of fee, it's worth getting title insurance. I don't recommend anybody buy property in North Carolina without paying and getting a title insurance policy, because it's fairly minimum, it's just that one-time purchase for that policy.
Okay, thank you.
Why did that come up?
Well, I thought he was talking about the $350,000 purchase of the weed patch mountain, and somehow it switched over to the American Legion.
I was talking about the American Legion, that was on the agenda.
Okay.
And that's what we talked about, he wanted me to bring up tonight.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, though.
Okay, I thought it was.
I thought, well...
Yeah, our apologies, we were supposed to have a closed session at the end of the meeting where you could discuss that property.
Well, actually, well, we, okay, it's in the minutes that we had the closed session and discussed the American Legion property. And so everybody understands what's going on. Later on, some discussion on an amount of money, and the individual called me, and I notified Mr. Nally, and I asked the American Legion folks if they had an offer for so much, would they consider it? And that's where that was at. And Mr. Nally sent an email out to all the commissioners, and they all responded individually, and I don't know yet what the responses were, but we were going to ask our attorney to draft an offer if all those responses were in favor of that and approve it at this meeting. And you weren't available.
I was in prison.
Right, yeah, voluntarily, so to speak. We do have an ethical attorney working for us, by the way, it's not like he was there on vacation.
Let him out, come to our meeting.
But since this has come up, would it be okay for us to, as a board, if the council agrees to approve that offer, could we make that offer and vote on it now?
Absolutely.
And you draft the appropriate documents?
I don't see why not.
Because that would have to be done in open session anyway.
Yes, absolutely.
So having said that, then, I would like to make the motion that we offer the American Legion $25,000 for their property with one provision, that they are allowed up to one year from the date of closing to remove their building, which they had expressed a desire to do so. And if they fail to do it, then the building would become the property of the town if they accept their offer. The second provision is, they expressed a desire to have a memorial plaque placed somewhere on the property, denoting the fact that it belonged to the Legion and what the, you know, noting the charter members and memorializing the American Legion and the number of years the post was here. So I would like to make that motion, what I just said, as that we make that offer.
Motion made by Steve, do I hear a second?
I second it.
Second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion on all that was said in confusion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
So if our attorney will draft all that stuff for us.
Okay.
Moving on to... Accidental progress.
Love it. Okay, item number six, public comment. Nobody signed up for a public comment? Would anybody like to make comments? Seeing no hands or motion, we move on.
Oh, there's one.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Okay, come forward.
Since we're talking about buying land again, um, Pet Maringer, that Memorial Highway, I met with a group of friends, and we got to discussing the strip mall. And we wanted some clarification as to why tax money was spent to buy the strip mall, and we didn't have commercial interest in it, and the ABC Board didn't want to move to it. Why are we getting, why would we even get rid of our greatest assets, which is our property around the lake? The microphone isn't on. It's probably the best.
Her question was, why did the town purchase the strip mall property?
I just wanted to be able to tell them, to clarify why we purchased it.
Well, I wasn't a member of council at the time, so I can, I can bag off on that one.
I'll answer it for you.
But I could answer it.
We have the asset management board that has...
This is the second question.
Okay, that board has been tasked by this council to take every piece of property that this community owns, which is somewhere around 50 properties, my understanding. Okay, they are to take one piece of property at a time, evaluate it to either keep it, repurpose it, or sell it and get it back on the tax rolls. These are professionals that deal in this realm every day. Our town has properties, some of them are small, that have no use whatsoever, therefore let's get them back on the tax rolls and get them working. This opportunity came up because you have the existing ABC building that is getting $500 a month rent, is what they pay out, to the community. You have a piece of property here that can be repurposed and reused, and a restaurant or some other type of business could go in there and generate many more funds for our community and our residents. The other building that came up was the strip center that was in short sale, is my understanding. The building is 6,000 square feet, full pay parking lot, four individual metered services, and was available at that time for $350,000. By the time we got through negotiating and going through it, we purchased it for $300,000. Per the asset management board, of which this council agreed, was to repurpose the ABC Board, move it over to the new strip center. Once we repurpose the strip center, then we'll even put it up for sale to someone as an individual investor. But what we are doing is we are generating, I guess, be commercial activity, trying to help the economy of the local area, of which, you know, is always struggling. So this was felt by both our asset management board and this council, the best way to go. And once the ABC Board is relocated, there's no reason that you will still have probably two retail lease spaces, and this would be a great investment opportunity, and we could even put it up for rent or for sale. There's no reason we have to hold it long-term, so that's also been discussed in reselling the building. So we're trying to generate activity, repurpose, and that's what this board is tasked with, and that's why it was done.
If I may make an addition, if not a correction, to what you said, the ABC Board, yes, they rent from the town. However, all of their profits go to the town, over and above the rent.
That's correct.
So in a good year, whatever expenses the ABC Board has in renovation, which they just did last year, even though they pay it, it comes out of the town's pocket because that's money the town didn't get because it was no longer profit. So it's kind of a, it doesn't matter which pocket you take it out of, the ABC Board, when it's operating successfully, supports the town.
Can I tell you a little historical story about that?
Well, when I came here, you know, the town hall was in that building, the police was in that building, the ABC Board was in that building altogether, and we spent money on the strip mall that we're going to put more money into to get it even ready for somebody to move into. It was just a group of us were talking, and we're trying to figure out why.
And that's why. One is a repurpose of building that we feel we can do more and better for the town.
Do you sell a lot of property that is sitting on the lake that's worth lots more money?
Nobody says it's going to be sold. All they're saying is it's going to be repurposed, it could be leased for a 20-year, a 100-year lease.
Or so.
That's correct.
When I remember the, I don't have all the numbers, but when Charlie Ellis presented it, there was tremendous upside and very little downside. And the fact is that we haven't gotten to it, and that was part of the downside. We should be moving on this as quickly as we can to make these things happen, in my opinion. But this is not the right time to adjudicate this particular situation. Maybe we can, at the next asset management, have a presentation of this and invite you to attend, because it's, I'd like to hear it again myself, because the numbers are foggy, because we did this back almost a year ago, when this was all put together. And we'll get Charlie to review those numbers.
It was just, the question came up, and I couldn't answer it.
Glad to answer it, and, you know, that's what we're here for.
It's been 40 years, but...
Me too.
No, it's a good question, Pat, and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yvonne, walk us to...
I was making a question.
Yes, well, come on forward, so we can hear you.
My name is Yvonne Anderson, I live in Garden Lane. I feel the same way Pat does. If the ABC Board needs a loading dock and all this and all that and all that, you knew they didn't have that at the strip mall. And you were planning on the ABC Board to move in there, how can they load all their trucks when there's not a loading dock or anything? Would that take them into consideration?
Yes, and it's not that difficult, Yvonne. Basically, it's like anything else, if you want something, you look at all the positives, and if you don't want something, you start, a loading dock is a non-issue. It can be easily done, and here...
And that's small property.
Sure.
It's been determined it can be done. And some of these things are red herrings, they're being thrown up there right now. Let us bring it before the next committee and have you all come in and look at the business case again. The business case, in my opinion, was solid, and, you know, and they were doing what they were tasked to do, so...
But you knew that the ABC Board didn't want to move?
We're here to look out for the entire community, and we're looking to generate commerce and increase commerce. We're here for all of you, not, unfortunately, you know, they may not want to move, but is that best for the whole community, and that's what we're tasked to look at.
Well, I understand that's your job.
Right.
Not mine, but it's my new question.
I appreciate it.
Also, I'd like to ask about the school buildings, why are they still there?
Steve can answer that?
Well, actually, I haven't had an update on that recently, but that's all tied up in lawsuit, and the owners of it went out of business, and they're tied up in court and...
So it's just going to remain that way for a year, or three, or four?
I don't know, that's an issue that's still being worked on. It's tied up, it's all legal.
The company that contracted to move them filed bankruptcy. And so the town has two processes, they can either go through the bankruptcy court and ask for an order requiring, allowing us to remove it, but then you've got the expense of litigation and bankruptcy and all that stuff, or pursue the performance bond. Currently, the town is trying to pursue the performance bond on the contract to have the performance bond insurance company pay out of the insurance policy to move those trailers. So that's what's going on. It was deemed that would be cheaper and faster for the town than trying to deal with it in bankruptcy court as the first way of proceeding to that.
But it would be nice if the council or the mayor or whoever would let the city people know what's going on as to why they're still there. Or have you sent something out that I haven't seen?
Maybe an update on the website.
Yeah, I believe there's something on the website, and I encourage everybody, anytime you have a question like this, to start your research on the website. If it's not there, we'll make sure we get something out there.
If it's there, we don't know, because I'm not real good on computers and so forth. But that's no excuse. But I'm just wondering if everybody else knows what you're just telling me now, because it would be nice if, a lot of people don't go on the website to find out, I don't.
Yeah, that's all in a legal process, and as you know, Yvonne, those wheels of justice are slow, so...
Well, it just, that whole strip mall there really takes away from our view of the town.
Well, that's one reason the town also purchased that strip mall, is to try and turn it into something productive. And believing or not, and folks may not know this, but the town has already had a couple of offers, and interested parties inquiring about that strip mall, and saying, when's the ABC going to move? Once they do, I might want to buy it, you know? So, because they would already have a firm tenant in that building.
We know, that strip mall has been there forever and never been successful, except for the bank. But anyway, I had that there's a offer, but I didn't know that you would buy something to sell it. I'm not a businesswoman.
Sure. Thank you, Yvonne. And I will personally let you know when we review that situation in front of the asset management.
That doesn't have to be personal.
No, 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 but I mean, just because we'd like to have you here at that meeting, so you can ask some of the, address us some of your questions to Charlie Ellis, who is really the architect of this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else at the risk of, okay, moving on. Number seven is the consent agenda. Do I hear, you've all looked at the items of the consent agenda, do I hear a motion to accept it?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Merritt.
Motion made by Stephen, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? I don't believe there's any unfinished business. So, moving on to item number nine, new business, and that's the appointment of a town attorney, William Morgan Jr. I think you've all had in the packet the resume, and we've already approved it in a closed session, so could I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion. We go ahead and follow through with the contract for William Morgan.
Motion's town attorney. Do I hear a second?
Second it.
Second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I was going to ask for clarification. Mr. Morgan, do you prefer that we use your full WMC Morgan Jr. or William Morgan Jr. or what on all correspondence and things relating to town business?
I have no preference.
Okay.
Okay, Billy.
You changed quick.
Can't help myself. Okay, that's been approved unanimously. Item number nine B, the contracts, these are regarding the contracts for the fire protection with Bills Creek, Chimney Rock, and Fairfield Mountains Volunteer Fire Departments. Ron, do you want to come forward and help us understand this?
Yes, what you have in front of you is just updated contract, the fire departments, Bills Creek, Fairfield, and Chimney Rock all operate for the town under a contract, and it's been that way for long before I came here. The contract hasn't been updated in probably over seven years. Chris, Ron, before he left, had... Chris Braun, before he left, had inquired about this and suggested that we review, make some updates, and go through it. We worked on, actually met with the fire chiefs from the individual fire departments prior to his leaving, discussed the concerns that they had with changes, give them time to review them, and then have made consensus with the chiefs to review the changes that were made. And they've all, and the two of them have already signed and returned their copies of one of those creeps to come back.
Was there any changes there we need to be aware of that...
I don't think anything that affects the town in general, the main changes we had was just to better reflect the working relationships between the fire departments and to address questions that had arisen in that period of time since. And the 2008's, when the municipal department was organized and the contract was redone at that time, however, you know, maybe you learn things as you go. So, so there were some things instituted in the new contract that addressed concerns that had arisen, and tried to address those so that they would be taken care of. And, and that's basically the changes that were made with that town. There's also some things that have changed from ISO, our insurance services office that's upcoming inspection that will be next year, there's some things that they have changed that was, that have been better addressed by the contract, so we've included some of those also. I would say, I'm just guessing, but about 70% of the contract is from the same as it was before, and we just added some things that we felt were necessary, and it's all going to be about the chiefs.
Okay. Chris, Chris says he has reviewed it also, didn't see any issues there. And the only other thing, of course, anytime you leave an open money area, but it also says that the contract will only pay what the council agrees to allow or budget in that year. So there's no set dollar amount, like, right now for the community, we pay $45,000 a year to Bills Creek and to Chimney Rock for additional coverage. We have to have the additional coverage because to get the best insurance rate, you must have a response within five miles. So being the size of Lake Lure, we have to have some help, so we actually have four stations covering Lake Lure, and that's to meet the requirements of the insurance companies and such. So those two contracts presently are $45,000 a year.
That's one of the things that was a little vague in the, the prior contract about that money relationship, and I think, you know, Chris addressed a lot of that, and I think that's been cleared up in this new contract, hopefully. And, and the payment wise wasn't really addressed in the prior contract. This contract, in the past, it was paid one month sum, and this particular contract says we made two payments in the binding.
Well, you said Chris has reviewed it, you mean Chris Callahan?
Yes.
And you said Chris...
Chris Braun.
You said Chris Braun.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay. And, and Mr. Callahan, you see nothing wrong with this contract or any...
It actually looked fairly generic. Again, they can't charge you more than what you budgeted.
Right.
So you kind of control fees by your budget process.
Oh, I was looking at, the old one was then done in '08, I believe, and now this new one says that it remains in effect through the 16, 17 fiscal year, and this agreement shall automatically renew annually with the adoption of the budget, unless either party indicates in writing. Is there anything wrong with that clause at all?
No, because means...
I mean, I understand the intent and...
Let me see though. It, I probably need to say unless, unless, automatically renewed, unless canceled, but it sort of says automatically renewed by the adoption of the budget. I assume if you put zero in that line item in the budget, you've effectively limited them, because again, their fees are based on what you budget.
Yeah, unless either party indicates in writing their intent to not renew the agreement, and putting that in the budget would do that. But, but we don't have any plan to do that, so I want to make sure everyone understands that. Oh, the, the other thing is, the second paragraph says, whereas the town of Lake Lure is responsible for fire protection inside the corporate limits, does it need to say of the town of Lake Lure?
No.
It doesn't specify which corporate limits, but is that implied?
Be nice to add it, maybe, but it's, it's understood it's not Rutherford's, you know, when you're dealing with the town. If it said its corporate limits, I guess that might even be...
Yeah, and then the fourth, fourth, whereas the town, the fire department desire to enter, enter into this agreement for the fire department to provide A with fire protection for and within the district inside the town, the boundaries of Lake Lure. So, okay, that's, that's okay.
Yeah, I think corporate limits is fine, because again, the contracts between Lake Lure and you're talking about trying to, the duties of providing that fire protection in the corporate limits. So I think you have to designate the name of the town.
And, and I understand the only one in our packet is Chimney Rock, but Bills Creek and Fairfield Mountains has agreed to the same contract, just changing the name to protect the innocent.
The name's the only thing that's different. As you note, the contract does not specify the money amount.
Right.
They can use the same contract and have different money amounts, the money will be addressed by the...
Okay. Will any other changes occur other than the names?
Not that I'm aware of. No, no, answer your question.
Okay, okay.
And the signatures obviously are different, too.
And, and why hasn't our new attorney reviewed this already? I mean, come on.
It's not until January.
Okay, answered all my questions, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, we go ahead and accept the contract?
I'm sorry.
I said apparently, he didn't even know he was our attorney.
I second that.
Okay, motion made by Bob, second by Stephen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to item nine C, assistance to firefighters grant request. Ron?
Basically, we apply, the federal government has a grant that's available to fire services, fire departments, annually. It's called the, it's feeled through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and it's assistance to firefighters grant. We've applied for this in, in years past, and it's been a long time since we've been successful, it's become very competitive. But we apply basically on an annual basis, and what we're basically just asking is the amount of money that we're looking at, the projects we're looking at, the total approximately $150,000, not to exceed $150,000. Our portion, that would be $7,500, 5%. So we're just asking permission, for permission to apply for this grant, and then if, if awarded, then we'll be responsible for 7,500.
You say you've...
Depending on the amount of total that comes up, it'll be generally over $7,500.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you said you've applied for this every year, or many years. Is it always the same amount that you apply for?
It's different, we apply for different things.
Okay.
Depending on the particular year, there are certain things that, that's more favorable.
Okay, then that took care of my other question. I'm good.
Okay, I'm good.
All righty. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, we go ahead and accept the assistance for the firefighter's grant request, up to a limitation of $7,500.
Motion made by Bob. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item number D, Duke Energy Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Support Project Funding Program. That's a lot of words. Shannon?
Hopefully, this will be simple. We were notified that Duke Energy is sponsoring a program where they will reimburse you up to 100% of cost for installation of electric vehicle charging stations. So we thought that this could be a nice strategy if we have electric vehicles, if you have these charging stations, these cars drive, and charging stations charge, especially if we're doing some sort of circuit or tour. And if we're placed on that tour, and they come to Lake Lure, they get to experience Lake Lure. Upfront cost is no additional cost to the town, will be reimbursed by, by Duke Energy. There is an ongoing cost, and from what we understand, Mr. Nally's had some experience with these before in the past, but it's the cost of a light, and we have lots of those already under contract with Duke Energy. So for minimal cost per month, then we, we basically are using this strategy to bring the folks here with, with electric vehicles. One of the other things that we have asked the TDA to consider, the charging station would be located next to the TDA, right there, between the tennis courts and the TDA, and if we're bringing tourists to Lake Lure, the thought would be that perhaps the TDA then would pick up the ongoing annual cost of having the charging station there. So if we get the upfront cost covered, and the ongoing cost covered, then we have tourists coming to our area using these vehicles, which could, could mean they stay, spend money, they stay, they spend the night, so that's the strategy. This is really a letter of interest to pre-application, submittal, we don't know that, that we'll know today, but we wanted to let you know that in case we're notified that they're interested in us submitting the full application. We didn't want you to be caught, not knowing, so that's why we have it on here.
Any questions for Shannon? Okay.
Why didn't we ask for the $50,000 reimbursement instead of the 20?
Well, we were going to start small, and if it's successful, we can go back and go.
Shoot. Whatever happened to go big and take what you get?
Thank you.
That didn't go so well.
We'll see where it goes.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thanks, Shannon, yeah. Do we hear a motion? We don't have a, we don't have to do this because we'll wait and see. Okay. Item number nine E, Town of Lake Lure and Lake Lure Properties LLC Lease Agreement for the sign over on the town property. George, you need anything to speak to? Does everybody understand the situation? Is there any reason not to approve a, a lease?
No, it's just an update of the old lease and very minor, very few changes, which are in red, very, very self-explanatory.
Okay.
And if nobody else has anything else, I'll make a motion that we accept that lease agreement.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bob, Stephen, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Anyone that might not, might not realize, that deals with that big sign out in front of the Arcade Building. That's the lease agreement for that large sign, is what that deals with, so...
Okay. Number nine F, Pangaea Services Agreement Amendment. And they, nobody from Pangaea is here, and Russ Pitts isn't here. Ron, do you want to just say a couple of words about that? I don't think there's really much, meant, much change.
Sure, be glad to. The Town of Lake Lure and Pangaea Internet entered into a service agreement in April 2016. Pangaea has requested an amendment to that agreement. The two amendments are included in your packet there. One is to connect fiber to the Lake Lure Public Works Facility and to, and extend the exclusive equipment license to include not only the town hall building, but the water tower equipment room and any other town hall, or town-owned locations.
Just a, it's a nice upgrade.
Right.
Okay, any, any other questions?
Well, Mr. Mayor, in, in the proposed motion, and Mr. Nally, it had to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. I noticed you did execute the one in April, but that was right after Chris Braun left. But I think it's proper that the town manager is the one that executes a service agreement for the town. Is it not under town manager responsible? I mean...
It's okay with me.
I'm trying to save your rink.
Thank you.
So with that, I make a motion that we approve the First Amendment to the Pangaea Services Agreement between the Town of Lake Lure and Pangaea Internet, and to authorize the town manager to execute the Agreement Amendment.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Fully approved unanimously. Okay, we move on to nine G, which now is the Colette Services Agreement to look at this strip mall.
If I could very quickly in the beginning on that, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
We, we call that the Colette Contract, and, and we need to get away from that. It's on Colette letterhead. This is not an agreement with Colette, it is an agreement with Moser Services, an individual who works for Colette from time to time and has used their letterhead. So I want to make, make that point simply because some people have felt in the past that there is a conflict of interest between Charlie Ellis on the asset management board, who works for Colette, and making recommendations on, on different things. He did not, this has nothing to do with Charlie Ellis. This individual is working on his own, and as you notice, it says reference Moser Services. The consulting agreement next page is made by and between Moser Services and the Town of Lake Lure, and that is who the contract is with, is Ryan Moser. And it's for $15,000. This is to start moving on that strip mall, which had, got delayed by Chris Braun's departure and the four-month search for the new town manager, and, and several of the commissioners have been hounding Ron, hey, let's get moving, let's get moving on that, we need to see something happening on that project. And, and so this is the next step, so...
Okay. Any other questions for either Ron or any of us? I'm hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I have a suggested motion, since this was added. The motion is to approve the consulting agreement with Moser Services in the amount of $15,000, and to authorize the town manager to execute the necessary documents.
Yeah, I'll be glad to second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, although it's, you know, not appropriate, but go ahead, Pat, if you have something.
I just, I say mine for $15,000.
Okay.
He said consulting.
But he, did he get your answer? I'm sorry.
He said consulting services.
Okay.
And I've got a copy of that, I'll be glad to give it, give it to you.
Yeah, you can have my copy if you want.
Okay. All righty. Motion made, seconded, any, any other comments or questions?
I'll just comment that I recommended after our ABC board meeting, as the ABC board discussed their, their feelings that they had been, had been told that there would be a, a study done, a plan to confirm or discover that it was not an appropriate site and could not be converted very well for their use. And I think probably this is necessary in order to overrule some of the objections or some of the, the things that have been questioned as to whether or not it can be successfully converted for their use. So to, to that extent, I would agree, the study needs to be done.
Okay, and I think that combined with a presentation on the benefits and, you know, the upside-downside, I think maybe will put us back all moving together. I know this was supposed to be done right after that decision was made, and it just fell through the cracks when Chris left.
Well, and, and part of the unrest and the push to do something was that for a while the weeds were growing up around it. It was town property at that point, and it looked horrible. And then there was also a drainage problem that I don't quite understand all about, but I think there was a collapsed culvert or some things that had to be corrected. So work has been done, most of it underground.
And, and also the reason we've been trying to get this guy here to, to nail this down is so he can meet with the ABC board, and, and I think now we can effectively do that, so...
Okay, with that, you made the motion, Bob seconded it.
Yeah.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? And item number 10?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Bob. To adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mary Ann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'd like, just, yeah, yeah, good, right.